Okay. I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for December 13th, 2022. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer.
Here.
Barbo.
Here.
Bona. Harpen.
Here.
Obasaham.
Here.
Alaskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
A, President, we have a quorum. We just want to do a sound check. You can't hear anything on Facebook Live? There's no audio? I'm going to give it a second to see if we can get it. There does seem to be a delay.
That's at 100 on here.
How about now?
There it is.
No, that's... We're going back from the previous.
From the last video.
There's no live feed.
Okay, well, you guys play with that. I'm going to run the meeting.
All right, there we go.
Got it. Okay, good. Are there any remembrances? I'll have to check. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and silent remembrances. And the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes. We have, you guys received the October 25th, 2022, but not the 9th. He does have them, but he'll post them as a draft on the website and approve them at the next meeting. So could we have a motion to approve the minutes of October 25th, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Alaskowitz, Counselor Sapienza. Discussion? Everything is a roll call vote because we have remote participation, so go to it.
Barbo.
Yes.
Bona. Oh, no. Harpen.
Yes.
Obasaham.
Yes.
Alaskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Blackmer.
Yes. Motion carries. Hearing of visitors on agenda items. Anyone wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please go to the microphone, give your name, address for the record, and no personal attacks, and you have a two-minute limit. Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to the first item. Council Paper 11,790, An Ordinance to Amend Section 10, entitled Special Regulations of Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams by inserting a numerical there order therein the following section 10.13. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Make a motion to postpone to the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Do you want to go into a little detail?
Yes. The planning board met last night. Previously, there was a joint meeting. This is concerning short-term rentals. The planning board met last night and unanimously approved the ordinance with not three changes, but three clarifications. I got a memo today on two of the clarifications. These are very minor. We're real close, finally. One that I did not get back, this was from the Office of Community Development, and I just want to make sure that that one wasn't forgotten, or maybe they have decided that that one wasn't necessary. I'm not quite sure. So we just need a little technical tweak here, and I'm sure we'll be able to bring it back to you in two weeks. And hopefully, we'll finally have a resolution, and this thing will be done after years of work.
So the changes, are these omittals or just some language changes?
There's just some language changes. There was a reference to somebody being needed within 25 miles of a short-term rental in case there was an emergency. It appeared in one section of the ordinance but did not appear in another. That was one instance. There were... So we just need to either add or subtract, or decided to add to make sure that the document was...
Consistent.
Yep. And the other one had something to do with some question as to three bedrooms in a unit, whether that constituted whether you could do individual if you had three bedrooms. This is for owner occupied. It was just language needed to be cleaned up. That one has been taken care of, and the third one, I forget what the third one was, but...
I don't remember what it was.
No, I don't either. They're all very minor, and as a result of that, we feel that we can put this to bed, hopefully, in two weeks.
And we don't have the letter from the planning board with their recommendation?
That's correct. I didn't know if that was just a technicality or whether we actually had to have the letter. But anyways, bottom line is, the planning board is in the same consciousness as the council, and we're all on the same page.
Any more discussion? So we have a motion and a second. I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
I did have a question. I just was looking for clarification on what the three questions were, because last night I did go to the planning board meeting, and they didn't know what the three questions were. They weren't able to identify what the three questions were that were needing discussion, and there were no meeting minutes for the public hearing. So that was... But two of them you know, and I'll try to find out what the third one was.
Well, I was expecting this to take longer than it did because of the holiday. They needed to get the three players on the mayor's ad hoc committee together, which is Zach Florrie, Mr. Moriarty, and Mike New Valley. They didn't know if they... They were having trouble getting together because Mr. Florrie's not here physically. I did get a memo today that I don't know why the third one. And I'll be quite honest with you, I don't know what that is. It may be that they didn't think it was necessary, but it's going faster than I expected them to. I mean, you were there at the meeting. We thought it was going to take a while. Apparently, that's not the case, so I think we can wrap this up in two weeks.
And I'll... Counselor Harpen?
I was there as well. I think the other question has to deal with whether it was formality in wording, whether you can rent to one person at a time, or if you can rent one short-term rental at a time. Because there are going to be some houses, two-family, three-families, that can have more than one short-term rental. So I think it was just confusion in the language, whether it was one person or one short-term rental.
And I'll go back and look at my notes and see if I can, over the weekend, and see if I can figure out what the third thing was. Counselor Alaskowitz.
So ample time before the next meeting, we'll receive copy of the updated language to review before the next meeting?
Absolutely. In fact, I have the updated language now for two out of the three, but without knowing what's going on with the third, I did not present it.
It would be nice to actually have all of it in one document before that, so... Okay. So we have a motion and a second roll call.
Barbo.
Yes.
Harpen.
Yes.
Obasaham.
Yes.
Alaskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Blackmer.
Yes. Hopefully for the last time. Council Paper 12,185, An Order Borrowing $500,000 for the City's Share of Feasibility Study Regarding Housak River Flood Control. We voted by roll call to rescind, and we voted to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, so this is just the actual vote to pass.
Move to approve. Second.
And this is a roll call vote, and it does need a two-thirds majority.
Barbo.
Yes.
Harpen.
Yes.
Obasaham.
Yes.
Alaskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Blackmer.
Yes. Did you call Obasaham? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Council Paper, I'm sorry, Mayor's Communication Number 114, requesting time for members of the Healing Communities Study from Boston Medical Center to provide a brief presentation. Mayor?
Great. Thank you, everyone, and happy Tuesday. I'd like to welcome Dick Alkembray, Wendy Penner, and the group from Healing Communities to give us a brief update on some of the work that they've been doing.
Thank you, Council President Blackmer and the City Council, for allowing us to be here tonight and present quickly on the Healing Communities Study. I was here, I don't know, a couple of months ago, maybe, and said that we'd be back to kind of outline what this is about and how it works. I just want to say before I forget, and it's a point we should never forget, the work around these topics, substance use disorder, has been going on for about 12 years in the city. And I am so appreciative that we've had, in a sense, three mayors and a plethora of different councils and council members that have been so supportive of the work that's going on here to address the problems around substance use disorder. So I want to thank the council again. I didn't want to forget that later, because that would be critical, right? So anyway, what I'd like to do, though, is just to give a quick overview of what the Healing Communities Study is. We're the study's Lynn Gonell, and Lynn is our representative from Boston Medical Center for the Healing Communities Study. She helps pull our coalition together. I'll explain that in a little bit, but she can tell you kind of how the study came to be and kind of where we're at right now, and we'll go from there. So we also have Wendy Penner and Lani Sporbert are both here also who are on our coalition, and when the questions get really tough, I'm going to look to them for more appropriate explanations, so Lynn.
Good evening, all. Thank you so much for welcoming me here today. So my name is Lynn Gonell. I'm the facilitator for the Healing Communities Study. That's run by Boston Medical Center. So the study is in four states in the United States, which is Kentucky, New York, Ohio, and here in Massachusetts. From Massachusetts, Boston Medical Center is the grant, received the grant from NIDA and SAMSA to run the study. And there's 18 communities in Massachusetts. If you have the end out here, we can see there's a different community in Massachusetts. And there's two waves, and the plan is to reduce overdose death by 40% in three years. So we had wave one, which was during the COVID time, 2020 and 2022. That was the first wave. So we had eight communities, and now we are in wave two, which is North Adams is one of them. One of the community will like that one from 2022 until 2023. So the objective of the study is to implement evidence-based strategies in the community based on the community need, not like something that Boston Medical Center will come with, but people in the community will propose, and then they'll try to reduce overdose in the community. So for North Adams, so far, we are in a stage of proposal, proposing the different strategies, and they are being evaluated by Boston Medical Center. And next year, let's say January next month, they will start being implemented in the community. So there's three buckets that the study trying to attack, which is O E and D, overdose education and access distribution. The other one is M O U D, which is medical opioid use disorder, and the other one, which is a safer prescribing. Because the study found out that these three buckets, if we can tackle them, we can try to reduce overdose in this state. So so far, that's what we have, and yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much.
You're done yet. So as Lynn said, there's really three buckets, and the whole thing is around harm reduction and making sure people, number one, stay safe, and number two, can remain safe through things like naloxone and how we can help people there, along with medically other medicines that we can make sure people have availability to. Beginning, I think it was in June or July, we started to form our coalition here. Our coalition is typically consistent of about 20 people, I would say. The people are, all of the people are within, they're service providers, so folks from Spectrum, folks from Berkshire Harm Reduction, community members and whatnot, so folks from Brain Center, the like. And we come together every two weeks, and we talk about solutions and what we can do and how we can spend this money towards those solutions. The other thing that we've done, we worked very, very hard to bring the voices of those folks in active, both in active addiction and those folks working towards recovery. So we've had several, I think, three or four focus groups with folks locally within treatment facilities, Keenan North House, alternative living centers out towards Ashton Street. We've done focus groups there, and we'd also, through Berkshire Harm Reduction, we've talked to folks who are in active addiction to really get their understanding and idea of services that are here and possibly services that are not. The thing about, the wonderful thing about North Adams is we get about a half a million dollars to spend. That's the good news. The bad news is, not the bad news, but the hard news is it's got to be spent before the end of '23. So we're working as a coalition to really formulate a bunch of ideas, evidence-based interventions that we've proposed to date, total about $150,000. I'm going to go through them. They're on the back of your sheet, but I'll just go really quickly. More recovery coaches, so we're funding, we're proposing to Boston Medical Center and to Healing Communities that we are able to fund recovery coaches to expand access to medicines, contingency management programs to increase engagement and retention, peer outreach programs to distribute naloxone, Narcan, and other harm reduction resources. We're going to promote MC, well, next up, yes, thank you, in scope of pain safer prescribing consultations, services, and training for providers. Nalox boxes. People can't always get to certain places to get naloxone, so can we purchase and locate naloxone boxes around the city? Engagement coordinators. So we funded, I think, through our efforts, I think we're proposing to fund, is it three positions between Brain and Berkshire Harm?
No. No, the initiative is one between Pittsfield and...
Okay, one with Brain, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're proposing one additional person, one additional, yes, physician to deal with these folks one-on-one and help them with services. The Brain Center, I believe, has agreed to continue to fund those past our '23 date, so that's a good thing. We'll carry that over. Increasing naloxone availability at providers' offices, post-overdose outreach programs. Someone overdoses, and how do we deal with that? How do we get to them? How do we get to their families? How do we help them once we know they've overdosed? And transportation programs. We just approved that the other day, more transportation to give people access to services and help them find their way. Those are some of the things that we've proposed that will be hopefully funding and will get the approval from Boston Medical Center, from the Healing Communities folks for the study. That leaves us right now about 350,000 bucks to spend. And one of the things we're really thinking about now, one of the things, I've been on the community advisory board for this for three and a half years with Boston Medical Center. And my own personal belief is what can we do? The one thing we can do here to differentiate, the one thing that we're not already doing, the one thing that can last, the one thing that'd be the big splash. And we really think that opening a recovery center in the city at some level, we're still vetting that. It's a hard process. We need to really think that through. But can we find that one partner that can make it sustainable? The one partner that has horsepower with state and federal funders so that after 2023, this will continue to provide services for the people who need them most? So that's what we'll be, we're actually going to be talking about that again on our meeting on the 19th. So... Did I hit it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And because we're trying to, like, the different strategies that would be implemented in North Adams should be, come from people from North Adams, so we are inviting you to come to coalition, to be one of the members of coalition, so we can decide on different strategy that will be implemented in North Adams. So those meetings run every two Mondays from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m. on Zoom. So you have my contact. If you are interested, I can send you the calendar invite, and so, thank you so much.
And if you want further information about Healing Communities as it runs, or the four states that are running it, and the multiple communities that are running it, like Lynn said, there was a wave one of communities in Massachusetts, and now we're this wave two of communities. Pittsfield's also, and many of the wave twos are Western Mass communities. You can go on the Healing Communities website, and you can actually see the communities and open them up and see a lot of the things that they did with their money. And it's pretty fascinating, some of the things that have happened over time. But I'll just, I guess I'll end with the, first of all, any questions?
Counselor Wilkinson.
Yeah, I was just looking over your handout here. One of them is reduced high-risk opioid prescribing. Is that still going on? I mean, I'm...
Want to talk about that a little bit, Wendy?
I know doctors today are very reluctant to give out any kind of opioid pills of any nature. If they give you something, they give you nine pills so that you, or whatever. But I just, since it's highlighted here, I'm just curious as whether that's still a problem.
Yeah, I mean, so Massachusetts is one of the four states that's participating in the study, and these are the strategies for all four of the states. So Massachusetts really was out ahead of this in a lot of ways and created a prescription monitoring program that all prescribers are required to use. So that helps a lot to prohibit unsafe prescribing, where, you know, patients might be doctor shopping and things like that. That isn't really happening in Massachusetts anymore. And Berkshire Health Systems has been a real leader. They have a steering committee around pain management, an alternative pain management. So it's really the contaminated drug supply right now that's driving overdose deaths most across the entire country, really. But some states might need more help with the safer prescribing still.
Okay, thank you.
Wendy brought to my attention a disheartening article, I guess, that 2,200 pounds, is it, a month coming from South America, Central America? 2,200 pounds a month now is being seized, fentanyl is being seized now at the borders in the south. Just a couple of years ago, it was 2,200 pounds a year. So I think the understanding that there's so many tainted drugs out there now is so important. Get in front of your kids quick, let them know, and I think a lot, a big piece of this too is education. So we're going to continue to push forward. I wouldn't, like, as Lynn did, I would invite any of you to come to our meetings. Our next one is the 19th. Email Lynn, she'll get you right on the list. They're all Zooms, so they're pretty easy to attend, and we'd love to have your input. And if not, just to have you there to hear and support our efforts, so.
Counselor Sapienza.
To the chair. One of the things is with fentanyl, I've been reading a lot of things where people who aren't even involved in high-risk activities such as, you know, heroin addicts or whatever have been getting hit with fentanyl, residue being left in certain places, especially in public areas, where there was a story a couple of weeks ago where a very young child got in contact with some, a surface that was contaminated with fentanyl and actually overdosed, and the parents couldn't figure out why. Somebody came along with some naloxone and brought the infant back or the child back. So fentanyl is very scary to me, and I'm very concerned with our first responders and things like that being in contact with such stuff, because fentanyl can be absorbed through the skin, and it takes a very, very small amount. Most drugs are issued in milligrams, but when they issue fentanyl medically, it's usually issued in micrograms, so I just want to put that in perspective.
Thank you for that. And I think one of the great things about the city of North Adams, and I'm glad the mayor also supports this fully, is that we were the first community in the Commonwealth to have a full response, EMTs, fire, and police to overdose calls. And with that came a significant amount of training on how they respond to these things, and what they touch and what they don't, and what they wear, if they mask and they glove and do all these things. So these folks are now heavily trained to make certain that they don't get hurt while doing it, but it's a good point, certainly.
Can I respond to that?
Sure you can, please.
Because I think, you know, there's, thank you so much for bringing this up, because it's actually, it's a little bit more nuanced than, there's a lot of media reports about first responders overdosing from touching naloxone, and you actually, fentanyl cannot be absorbed through the skin, except for in the case of a fentanyl patch, which has special chemicals. Like, they had to work really hard to invent a way to get fentanyl to be absorbed through your, through your skin. So there's a lot of fear about there. You have people going into hazmat suits in schools or other places where there've been overdoses. You can only overdose from fentanyl by ingesting it. You can't even, there's even concerns like about marijuana being contaminated. If you smoke it, it burns up, and you can't, can't get overdose. So it is true that it's extremely dangerous, that inhaling, you know, an infant touching and putting, even a tiny amount could certainly cause an overdose, but the touching itself, it can't be absorbed through the skin. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Obasaham.
To the chair. Thank you, Dick, and Wendy, and Lynn, and the coalition for coming in and presenting us today with this, and just the education alone. Been learning so much, because, you know, I'm a part of the Healing Communities in Pittsfield and have been learning so much, and I think the important takeaway here is just the education around, around this, and I think that's what the Healing Communities is stressing as well, is the education that comes along with M O U D and naloxone and everything like that. So I had very little knowledge before this, and now I can, you know, pull people to the side or talk to them about, and educating around this, so thank you, because I know there's a lot of work that goes into this in a number of meetings once in a month. So thank you so much for updating us with this.
And as this, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, as this progresses, we'll, I'll keep the mayor informed, and the mayor can update the council on future decisions we make and how we make out with Boston, whether or not they're going to say, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down on some of the things we want to do. But so far, I think they've been very gracious in awarding other communities things that the communities have identified. This isn't Boston Medical Center coming in here telling us what to do or what we should do. It's us as a coalition, people who work in this and people who are passionate about it that are figuring out for our own community.
Counselor Alaskowitz, and then Counselor Harpen.
To the chair. Just thank you as well. I'll continue on with what Counselor Obasaham was saying. I won't be repetitive, but thank you. I mean, this is a community effort, and people like you are what make a community in North Adams such a great place. And one of the things that stood out the most to me in this program here is post-overdose. I mean, we talk about education, but we see it doesn't always work, but to follow up after someone has an occurrence, I mean, that, to me, that's a big thing. I mean, to show even after the fact that there are people out there who care and want to see, you know, something positive happen after that. I mean, I'm sure after an overdose happens, I mean, some people might realize they've hit rock bottom. I mean, some people don't naturally, but the post-overdose outreach program is the one that stuck out the most to me here. So again, thank you very much.
Counselor Harpen.
I just want to thank you all for your work. The community certainly needs it, and we deeply appreciate all your work. I know it's tough work, it's hard work, it's emotional work, and, you know, it's really appreciated. One question I did have, though, it does say it's for North Adams. Does that also include, like, northern Berkshire, Williamstown, Adams? Okay, so...
So technically, no.
Okay.
Technically, no.
Okay.
But I've been singing that song, the mayor knows this for two years, leading up to our chance as a wave-two community. Everything we do, we speak about northern Berkshire, everything.
Okay.
And because it has to serve, we're a much bigger place than North Adams when it comes to this problem. And the fact of the matter is, it doesn't, this doesn't live in Clarksburg, Adams, Williamstown, anywhere. So we're going to make sure it does.
Okay.
Services we provide are going to be as regional as we can make them.
Good.
Thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in and presenting and for the work. Council Paper 12,195, Mayor's Communication 115, recommending the reappointment of Kerry Cruz to serve as a member of the Commissions on Disabilities for a term to expire December 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Alaskowitz, Counselor Wilkinson. Any discussion? Roll call.
Barbo.
Yes.
Harpen.
Yes.
Obasaham.
Yes.
Alaskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Obasan and Counselor Oleskowitz. Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,200, Mayor's Communication Number 120, recommending the reappointment of Mary Molyerf to serve as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire January 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Harp and Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,201, Mayor's Communication 121, recommending the reappointment of Norman Antonio to serve as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire January 2nd, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,201, Mayor's Communication 121, recommending the reappointment of Norman Antonio to serve as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire January 2nd, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,200, Mayor's Communication Number 120, recommending the reappointment of Mary Molyerf to serve as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire January 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,200, Mayor's Communication Number 120, recommending the reappointment of Mary Molyerf to serve as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire January 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Harp and Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,201, Mayor's Communication 121, recommending the reappointment of Norman Antonio to serve as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire January 2nd, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,202, Mayor's Communication 122, recommending the reappointment of Heather Bolger to serve as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire January 2nd, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oleskowitz, Wilkinson, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,203, Mayor's Communication 123, recommending the reappointment of Charles Felix Jr. to serve as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire January 2nd, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Obasan, Counselor Oleskowitz, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. 12,204, Mayor's Communication 124, recommending the reappointment of Paul Moreno to serve as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire January 2nd, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Harp and Counselor Sapienza, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,205, Mayor's Communication 125, recommending the reappointment of Peter Sejen Thaler to serve as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire January 2nd, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Obasan, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,206, Mayor's Communication 126, recommending the reappointment of Tara Jacobs to serve as a member of the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire January 2nd, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Harp and Counselor Sapienza, discussion? All in favor, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,207, Mayor's Communication 127, recommending the reappointment of Richard Taskin to serve as a member of the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire January 2nd, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Obasan, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Licenses and applications submitted by Keith Dean to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Harp, discussion? Roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Bona, or Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. An application submitted by Rich Demone to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Move to approve?
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Oleskowitz, discussion? Roll, I'm sorry.
I do have a quick question. I don't understand, there's a couple of asterisks next to the part about a license having or have not been suspended, which would lead me to indicate there was some kind of an addendum, but I don't see anything. Does anybody know where, why that's there or where it came from?
I'm not sure. It was here when we, when we received it from the police department, so I'm, I'm not sure as to what.
I'm guessing you might have forgotten to fill it out, so somebody started for him to fill it. I don't know.
Okay, that's, I don't know if I was missing something.
I don't know. I, I mean, that would just be my guess, based on paperwork, and it is signed off by the police department, so.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Okay, discussion, roll call.
Barbo?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Obasan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Motion carries. Open forum, anyone wish to address the council on an issue of municipal significance? Please go to the microphone. You have two minutes. Name an address for the record and no personal attacks.
Sorry about that. My name is Eric Wilson and I live at Aging Eagles Street, St. Joe. I just want to wish you a merry, merry Christmas out there and here, and thank you for putting in the community with disability and other programs. It's really good to see that. And I got good news. I know everybody knows I wrote a book, and I want to tell everybody that it's out there. It's on Amazon, and the name of the title is "Nothing Happens Overnight." So hope and pray that you will buy it, learn something from it, and I'm glad I wrote it. I had a good time with it. I'm going to do a second one sometime this fall. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Robert Cardamano, 173 Squidzy Street. The last council meeting, Counselor Sapienza stated, "We must try to attract, attract some big box stores to our Main Street." Well, that is not going to happen, because here is a list of the stores that are getting ready to close or are closed. There are 58 of them. And people are buying online. But anyway, some of the, the stores that are either closed or, or closing, they're satellite stores, are Niall West, Vitamint Shop, Starbucks, Outfitters, JCPenney's, Macy's, Gap, Victoria's Secret, Sears, and Kmart. Them are some of the big ones. Here's fifty, a list of 58 of them. That is never going to happen. You know, I know you have a lot of suggestions, but, you know, the solutions are very, very difficult, so that's something to consider, to change what we do with Main Street, okay? The biggest drawback is that David Carver is charging such exorbitant rents that it's hard to attract some people. And thank you, I would like to thank the five councilors that voted for the residents of this city with the tax split. Thank you very much, and we appreciate it.
Done?
William Shanahan, 330 Church Street. Uh, just wanted to say, uh, I've been going to the last few meetings, and I've been enjoying them thoroughly. Uh, I'm a new resident, I guess, I'm a student right now, but I'm, I've been voting here since 2021, uh, and I'm just, uh, since it's my last one for this semester, uh, this year, uh, I'm just saying, I hope that in 2023, uh, there's some moves towards some, uh, some good projects. I know that the city council is really interested in helping, uh, the city, uh, and I know it's an election season, uh, so I know not as much work gets done on election years, but, uh, I'm, uh, very hopeful, and I just want to thank you all for all the good work.
Anyone else? Mayor's concerned? Updates, sorry.
Thank you. Council Shade, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, second here.
Okay, perfect. Um, just a quick update that occurred this afternoon, I'm sure some of you got the robocall, but we did have a water main break on Canal Street, um, which washed out a good portion of the road. We've closed the road overnight. Um, all public safety entities have been notified, we hope to have that road and the repair done tomorrow. Um, but just an update on that, that just came in towards the end of the day. Um, on Sunday, December 18th, we will have our menorah lighting here at City Hall in the lobby. Everyone is welcome to join us at 5:00 PM on Sunday, December 18th. I am pleased to announce that the North Adams Fire Department was awarded a $19,000 firefighter safety equipment grant. These funds will be used to buy turnout gear, dry hose dryers. Often, a lot of our turnout gear, um, just hangs in the station, so this will give us the ability to better care for our equipment. So, thank you to Chief LaFaye for his work on this grant. Um, let's see. The most exciting news I have is that I'm pleased to announce that we've secured a lease for the old juvenile court building for a temporary space for our police department. We are hopeful to have the team moved in February or March. We're still working on a plan of how to and if we can move our dispatch services, so more to come on that. The overall lease is for two years with the ability to do an extension. Realistically, we will probably be there three years. This is the first step in a long-term plan to improve our police department, and it launches many future steps in the overall public safety building project, which will also include the fire department. The lease is approximately $9,000 per month, and this money will be paid out of our RFP funds. In terms of the long-term plan, I know many of you have been asking, the long-term plan for public safety. We've recently completed a comprehensive needs assessment study done by Benick Associates. This document will be used after the first of the year to launch an RFP for design services, um, which we hope to have out in January or February. We've had many internal discussions about location of the building and as well as reuse of our own properties. We will continue to look at city-owned property, but the realistic part is we probably will need to purchase property. As part of the first phase of the RFP, we'll engage professional services to help us navigate any land acquisitions that we need to do. So, we are making steady progress on the public safety, um, building, but it was felt from an operational need and the needs that we need to accomplish to serve the community, especially at their most vulnerable times, um, that we need to vacate that building as quickly as possible. On the fire department side, as you know, years ago, they received some insurance money and have been able to make repairs. We've been able to address the ADA issues on the fire department side, because we do have an operating office downstairs. But the fire department still, our police department is in dire disrepair, it's not handicap accessible, um, and the building is falling down around us every day faster and faster. So, this has been not a hidden topic, but a long-term topic, um, that the city has been looking at, um, and I cannot continue to ask that department to operate in that building. So, we are very excited about the move, it is going to be timely. Um, the big piece, outstanding piece is how or when do we get 911 out there, over there? Um, the big problem that we have with the 911 is the equipment. Um, I think before I left in 19, or before I became treasurer in 2000, um, we got that equipment from Berkshire County, it was their old system, and it literally is hanging on by, um, duct tape and Band-Aids, and it will not survive a move. So, pay now, pay later, that's what we're trying to address. Um, dispatch can stay in that building, but it's not my ideal situation, so we're looking at a way to efficiently and financially make the move with dispatch to go over the juvenile court. But the operations of the police department will come first, and then, um, we're still exploring how we're going to get dispatch over there, whether it's going to be piecemeal or move everything all at once. So, there was, um, I know some of you felt that it was a surprise, um, I miscalculated on my calendar and thought we had a meeting last week, um, so I was, um, planning to update you last week, um, but here we are, we're excited, um, and, you know, uh, I think, I know this is the right move. It may not be, um, as smooth as it would be to go into a regular permanent home, um, but this is the right move for us at this time. Thank you. So, that is my update on the PD. And as the holidays approach, I just remind everyone to just look out for each other, check with your neighbors, and I'd like to wish all of you on the council, as well as all the citizens of North Adams, a happy holiday, and I look forward to working with all of you in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, just kind of, there's emails, so you could have sent us an email with what was going on, even if we didn't have a public meeting. I think it would have been greatly appreciated, I got calls on it.
Yeah, well, you could have called me too and asked me.
But I wasn't the one making the deal, so, um, so just, it, it's, I did get several calls from councilors and the public who heard about it, so.
And you're happy to call me at any time, Council Blackmer?
Yes, I know. I try not to.
But I love to...
Particularly during hours, but, um, but that was, my point is, there were ways to let us know, I'm sorry we didn't have a meeting, but it was discouraging. I'm glad we have a space for them, I also want to acknowledge the work that the fire department has done over the last several years to make their space usable, um, the guys have, guys, men and women have worked in that space, and they've made a lot of improvements themselves on their time and of their own, um, initiative to make those changes, I appreciate that, too. Um, we have a liaison reports, I think Council Sapienza?
Yes. Uh, I had the pleasure of attending a North Adams Chamber of Commerce meeting last night, and, uh, one of the things that they brought up were their technical assistance programs, and I just want to run over some, uh, quick stats from their, uh, from their program and how it's benefited the business community. Forty-two businesses participated in the technical assistance program in 2022, and since 2021, the chamber has supported the creation of 21 full-time jobs and 16 part-time jobs. Twelve businesses have received grants, and we're currently working or have helped with grant applications of five additional businesses. It has also helped maintain 22 jobs in our community. As of the fiscal year 2023, the, uh, North Adams Chamber had 27 businesses that have either participated in the TA program or are currently enrolled. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports or minutes? Liaison updates and councilors' concerns? Council Wilkinson, Council Olaskowitz, and Council Harpen, and then I'll go to that side of the table.
All right, to the, to the chair of the mayor, you mentioned moving 911 dispatch, and that it was antiquated equipment, that kind of stuff. Have you considered regionalization of the dispatch? There are other towns going there, I know Adams has recently joined, they're getting a very good deal for a very minor amount of money. It would eliminate the problem altogether, from what I understand. Presently, our 911 is financed by a grant, I have no idea when that grant would be over. Um, I think if, we, probably now is a good time to look into, uh, whether regionalization would be beneficial for North Adams, it would solve your problem about moving them, it would solve your problem about new equipment, it would solve the problem. I'm just curious, have you thought about that?
Is this a Q and A?
No.
Really don't want to get in, put it on the agenda.
Okay.
I don't want to get into it back and forth. Or have a conversation.
I'll be happy to eat you now.
Okay.
Council Olaskowitz.
So, this weekend, on the 17th of December, Reefs Across America will be placing graves, or, uh, reefs at 3,100 Graves at Selfview Cemetery, they're looking for volunteers. You could check in between 11:00 and 12:00 at the tent by the flagpole, I'm sure if there's no activity going on in the skating rink, that parking will be available there, but I didn't check the schedule of if there's any hockey games, but they will be more than happy to take any volunteers. So, there'll be a brief ceremony at 12:00, regardless of weather, rain or shine, they're all, everybody's still going to meet, and after the ceremony, they will give assignments of areas in the cemetery where people will go and place the reef, so. I'm sure it's quite laborious, there are 3,100 reefs to lay, so, uh, I was asked to give a reminder if anybody would like to show up and volunteer Saturday to help. Thank you.
Council Harpen?
Yeah, I just want to thank the mayor for the Christmas present. Um, I think this is wonderful for our community, and I'm sure that the police department and